Right here.
Let's get started. Roll call.
We can start with roll call, please.
Good morning. Commissioner Pavlik?
Here.
Commissioner Cammerer?
Here.
Commissioner Mendoza?
Here.
Commissioner Caliendo?
Here.
Commissioner Vinacor?
Here.
Commissioner Thomas? Commissioner Jones, Dan?
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Here.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, let's rise for invocation and pledge.
Lord, we ask your guidance today as we consider matters that will affect the safety and welfare of many people in our county. Help us listen with open minds to matters that are important before us and to act on those matters that will benefit those who reside in our area. Keep our minds opened and alert, our hearts compassionate, and our comments charitable. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own.
The zoning commission of Palm Beach County has convened at 9:00 a.m. in the Vista Center, Ken Rogers Hearing Room, B.C. 1W47, 2300 North Jog Road, West Palm Beach, Florida, to consider proposed applications and staff recommendations pursuant to the Palm Beach County Unified Land Development Code. The commission takes final action regarding Class B -- sorry. Takes -- the commission takes final action regarding Class B conditional uses, subdivision variances, and Type II variances, and issues advisory recommendations on other requests. The Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County will conduct a public hearing at 301 North Olive Avenue, West Palm Beach, Florida, in the Jane M. Thompson Memorial Chambers, sixth floor, on applications not subject to zoning commission final action. Zoning hearings are quasi-judicial in nature and must be conducted to afford all parties' due process. The Board of County Commissioners has adopted procedures for conduct of quasi-judicial hearings to govern the conduct of such proceedings. The procedures include the following. Any communication with commissioners which occurs outside the public hearing must be fully disclosed at the hearing. Applicants and persons attending the hearing may question commissioners regarding their disclosures. Such questions shall be limited solely to the disclosures made at the hearing or the written communications made a part of the record at the hearing. Any person representing a group or organization must provide documentation that the person representing the group has the actual authority to do so regarding the matter before the commission. Any person who wishes to speak at the hearing will be sworn in and may be subject to cross-examination. The applicant and county staff may cross-examine witnesses. Any other persons attending the hearing may submit cross-examination questions, including follow-up questions, to the chair, who will conduct the examination. The scope of cross-examination is limited to the facts alleged by a witness in relation to the application. Public comment is encouraged, and all relevant information should be presented to the commission in order that a fair and appropriate decision can be made. Do we have proof of publication?
We do.
To receive and file?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Swearing in.
All those wishing to testify or speak on today's items, please rise and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Amendments to the agenda?
We do have some amendments to the agenda, starting with consent, C1, ABNZ 2024-01914, paving lady. We have a correction to the motion for the abandonment. This, there's no action necessary for the zoning commission, as it is a decision by the Board of County Commissioners. Item number three, DOA 2024-01760, Boca YMCA, there's a modification to Exhibit C for the Development Order Amendment to modify the All Petition Condition Number Two and add in Health Condition Number Five. On the regular agenda, item number seven, W 2024-01566, Beach Sound, modifying the staff report to include E13 disclosures of ownership, as well as E14 correspondence. I also received three more emails at around 4:30 last night, so those will also be included into the record that aren't in your packet, because I got them after we printed "Add Delete."
Okay.
Then we have an amendment, amendment to Type II waiver, Exhibit C, All Petition Number Two, added modified language, Engineering Condition One, to add the qualifier for issuance of a building permit. Then item number eight, PDD CA 2023-00843, West End Crossing, amending the Exhibit C1 for the rezoning, to clarify building and site design condition number two, and modifying Exhibit C2 for the Class A conditional use relative to where the setback is taken from for item number, Use Limitation Condition Three.
Motion to adopt the agenda?
And the addendums?
I'm sorry?
Motion to adopt the agenda, and the motions as well, the additional motions.
Additional motions.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Amendments.
Any opposed? No. Postponements and withdrawals?
No conflicts and restrictions.
Okay, let's, let's start on any conflicts or recusals to my left? Any conflicts or recusals?
No conflicts.
No conflicts.
No conflicts.
No.
None.
I have none.
I spoke with Jeff Atwater on the ocean.
That would be.
That's disclosure. Do you have any conflicts?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's later. Sorry.
Not a problem.
Have a sleep.
No conflicts?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay. Now, any postponements and withdrawals?
We have no postponements or withdrawals or remands.
All right, we'll move to the consent agenda. Any disclosures on consent items?
None.
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 None on consent.
I have none either.
None.
Commissioner Kennedy?
I'm sorry.
Do you have any disclosures on consent?
No.
Okay. Any requests to pull items on consent? Okay.
Motion to adopt.
Before you do the motion, can I just confirm you have no cards for any of the items on consent?
Consent items? We'll take, we'll take a look.
Believe no.
And while he's taking one, I, I take it back. You have disclosure on one of the consent items. They're up here. What is West End?
That's a regular.
It's a regular. Never mind.
Okay. Now we can have a motion.
No cards for items on consent. Okay.
I'll second the motion to it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we'll move on to the regular agenda. Item five.
Yes, item, actually, item five and six are companion applications. PDD DOA 2024-01924, Ascot 441 and Atlantic. And then item number six is the 2024-01925 Neal Property, and they, do you like a presentation from the applicant?
Mr. Chair, can I ask you a question, please? Are we going to have, when do we have disclosures for the regular agenda? When do we have that?
Yeah, I think it'd be appropriate to do it now.
Do it, okay, at this point. Any disclosures?
Just, just for these two items right now.
Just for these two?
Yeah, we said we would do it item by item.
Oh, okay.
No disclosures.
None. Yes, for five and six, I have Doug, I spoke to Doug Murray.
None.
I have none.
None.
Okay, then we can move on with the presentation.
I think it was me. Go ahead, try it now. Try it now, I think it was me.
No? There's one there.
Good morning, Commissioners, Doug Murray, WGI. Before you today, we have the two items, it's items five and six. We have Ascot 441 Atlantic Preserve and the Neal Property. These are companion items. This, this request overall is a preserve swap in the ag reserve. So again, we have the request for the item five is a rezoning of the preserve parcel is 15 acres from AGR to AGR PUD. We have a Development Order Amendment to the Ascot 441 PUD to add land area 15 acres for an existing 330.6 acre AGR PUD. We're requesting to allow a partial release of the conservation easement. And the second item, item number six, is a rezoning of the existing preserve parcel to AGR. So what you can see here is the intersection of Atlantic and 441. The development parcel, which we're not affecting, is Ascot 441 Atlantic PUD. It's also known as Four Seasons. The preserve parcel that we're affecting is their preserve parcel number one, which is the outlined in red and white. Specifically, we are removing the preserve designation from the southern 15 acres, which is directly at the hard corner of the northwest corner of Atlantic and 441. Here we have the parcel that is getting a new preserve, a preserve designation. It's the same exact acreage, it's 15 acres. It's located midway between Boynton Beach Boulevard and Hypholuxo Road. If you're familiar with, it's just south of Armon Place, which is where there's a new strip center with Dunkin' Donuts, if you're familiar with the area. This piece does connect to an existing preserve parcel. It's just fronting on State Road Seven, but behind it, it's connecting to, it's about a 90-acre preserve parcel, so it's not an isolated preserve, it's connecting to an existing preserve. So back to the piece we're removing the preserve designation from. Again, it's the 15 acres, northwest corner. As you can see, on all the other, there's development on every other corner or underdevelopment. We have industrial and commercial, commercial to the south, and industrial type uses to the west and southwest. So from a planning perspective, we feel that this is a much more appropriate location to free up the piece from the preserve and assign the preserve to the parcel that's mid-block. At this point, there's no develop, we're not proposing any development, there's no, we would have to come back in front of you to have the zoning and land use changed. So we're not preserving anything. We acknowledge that this could potentially come back in the future for a development. There's, there is four, as you know, there's four major intersections in the ag reserve. We have Boynton Beach Boulevard and Lyons, Boynton Atlantic, and Atlantic and 441, and Atlantic and Lyons. So from a planning perspective, it makes a lot more sense to have this parcel freed up from, from preservation and reassign it to a mid-block parcel, so that in the future, if there is a need for any further commercial development in the ag reserve, that this piece would be available if needed at, at a major intersection. It's much more appropriate. Again, there's no intent for any development in the near future. As you know, there's a cap on commercial square footage in the ag reserve that's been met at this point, so it's something that, again, it's just in the future, if there's a need, it's, it could be available. The staff assessment, staff has determined that we meet the code, we meet the standards, subject to the condition of approval, and staff is recommending approval subject to the conditions of approval. That concludes my presentation. I will be available for any questions following staff's presentation.
Thank you.
Do you like a staff presentation?
Anybody need a presentation or have any questions? I think we're ready for a motion.
Public comment? Any cards?
Okay, we have no cards on this item.
No cards.
No cards, okay.
Entertaining a motion?
I make a motion for item number five to recommend approval of item 5B.
Second.
You have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Well, can, we have a discussion?
Okay, sorry. Go ahead.
You forgot 5A.
Oh.
It was 5A.
5A, all right. Well, I guess we'll have discussion first and then we'll re.
Restate, restate the motion.
Okay. Motion to approve item 5A and motion to approve item 5B.
Okay, discussion.
Okay. I have a problem with this, a big problem with it. At a planning perspective, like you said, from a planning perspective, there's no access given to the farmer north from Atlantic Avenue. And that is an issue because our farmers have to, will then have to go onto 441 to access the northern parcel. That's a problem. Right now, we have farmers always crossing between Atlantic Avenue, across 441, from east to west, and they, and that's difficult enough. Farmers and nursery people have had to purchase larger tractors, bigger tractors, to handle their equipment to get across these traffic lights and all in time, because we have T-boning on Lyons Road, we have accidents all over. There's no access from Atlantic Avenue, which is the lesser road here compared to 441. If you've been on 441 and you've been behind tractors, they have a really hard time turning. So anybody coming from Lyons Road, there's, there's farmers that have parcels on the east and west side of 441, on the east and west side of Lyons Road. They're using their vehicles and to try, now they're going to have to go onto 441, go north, and, and then come back down south. It's a problem, there's no access for them off of this parcel. Right now, there is access from Atlantic Avenue through this parcel to get to that, to, to get to the entire section. Now you're blocking that off. If there was some, it would be better if there was a portion west or that, an access to the north. It's poor planning here, and in our roundtable discussions back in 2014 and 15, there were 19 people on the roundtable, I was one of them, and the first day that we discussed was what is the consensus? And the entire consensus of every single person there, whether they were developers or, or non-developers, or it was to help the farmer. So I don't see this helping the farmer, I see this being a problem. And the farmer who's farming it now might be coming south down 441, but if that farmer chooses not to farm that area, and, and we have other nursery people and whoever, they're going to have to be coming from all over. There needs to be an access off of Atlantic Avenue. It's just very poor planning, and you don't have a site plan now. So what do we expect? We have to wait for you to get a site plan and then say, please give access to the farmer to the north? That's my comment, so I'm going to be voting against this.
Yes, you may respond.
Yes, definitely a very valid point. So, as you know, this does not change, there's going to be no change to the property at this point, okay? We're talking about something that's happening in the future. Certainly, when we come back in, I completely agree, that, that makes sense. We would certainly agree, I mean, I can't, I don't have a site plan right now, but we can, I can agree verbally that we're going to address that and having a, keep an access off of Atlantic Avenue that would go up to the farming operation or whatever agricultural operation is happening at that time. You know, I completely agree, but until we get into the planning portion of it, I mean, I can tell you, again, I can't commit to anything at this point, but it's a large piece of property, right? There's certainly a potential that the western part could, we could still commit to, for that to be preservation. When we, when we come in for a development, there's probably not a need to develop the back half of that, the back portion of that, if we're doing some sort of a non-residential development. So that could possibly, something that we could agree to is to have a portion of it still be preserved. We could have the western portion be a preserve in the future in exchange for being able to have some sort of development. So I completely agree, and I, I can commit to, if, when this ever comes back in, that we will address that.
I just want to respond to it. Thank you for that. I don't know if you'll be the planner at the time when it comes back in, but you say there is no change right now. There is a change. We're changing from AGR PUD to AGR. So there is a change. That's, that's all I have to say.
Great, I just mean physically to the site.
I, I have a question just for.
Commissioner Cali, Caliendo?
Sorry.
Okay. Yeah, I understand what our other commissioner here has just brought up, it's certainly very valid, but I also agree, we're not here to approve or disapprove that parcel, to do anything with it right now. So at the time that they're going to develop it, yes, I think that restriction needs to be in place to make, put in access from Atlantic, but that's not what they're trying to do here. So we need to focus on what they're asking to do and not something that will become in the near, sometime in the future.
Commissioner Pavlik?
I just.
Commissioner Pavlik?
I just had a question because that was an interesting point I was looking at. So the parcel, the 15 acres that we want to take out of the preserve, right now, that is a farm? Is that being farmed or is that part of the reserve?
Correct, it's being farmed.
It's being farmed, and so that farmer currently owns it, or that's the access, that small road that comes off?
The property leases it to a farmer.
Okay, and then the rest of the property would be accessed potentially by that Atlantic, but there is a, there is an.
There's currently an access off of Atlantic, and there's also multiple access points off of 441 for that farm.
I just wanted clarity as I looked at that further, thank you.
Commissioner Mendoza?
Yeah, I just, along with you, this is not the first time in this year that we address changes in the properties, leaving out the, the traffic, leaving out the existing roads, and that is nonsense, because, yes, you're right, it will make a difference, and then when it change, in some point, you, you don't need to have an access as requested. But my point is why we are just dealing with sections and parcels without taking in consideration what is happening, how many roads we have, how much traffic is happening, to get this point and then eventually approve new developments just because this is the right process. I, I, I just want to call that we need to work in an integral way with the roads and what is happening with the city. That's my only comment.
Can I respond to that?
Yes.
I think we're, again, we're getting off track here. They're not coming here and asking for any usage of that property. At some point, somebody will, and when they do, that's when we put in those restrictions. We're, we're dealing out of our bellywag in what we're authorized to do here, in my opinion. We're here to approve just what's on the agenda, nothing else.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, there's just one more item that we had discussed, I had discussed with Doug. The issue of this being so wide east to west and north to south, it's not very wide. The entire frontage, nearly the entire frontage on 441 is entirely in the deceleration right-hand turn lane. So it would be safer to have this parcel, if you're going to use 15 acres, a little bit, leave a little bit in the back and make this a little bit longer north to south. So it's just another concern. If you look at the parcel, the, the, this quadrangle here, it, the entrance is going to be a problem as well, so, with, with traffic for motorists, so, but that's, that's even beside the point. The issue is really with the configuration.
Could I do a quick response to that? Yes, we did look into that, obviously, that's another proper concern. We, there is still over 160 feet of frunches that is not in front of the turn lane, so that's plenty of room to have a, a main access point to this site in the fut, again, in the future, and still have a turn lane. The turn lane can extend north of this property if needed, but there, there is adequate room to have the main entrance on 441. Also, just to point out, I mean, we, the parcel, yes, it's an even swap of 15 acres, so we had to hit the 15-acre mark, and the intent was basically to kind of square it off, have it opposite of the industrial use, as well as trying to avoid a narrow strip of preserve in the back. Because, I mean, again, I'm trying, we're trying to have good planning practices here, and I don't think a strip in the back, strip of preserve, usually, we try to avoid narrow strips of the preserve, so that was just the reasoning behind why we're just trying to square this off.
All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second?
Yeah, we already did.
We do, we do, we are ready for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, the motion passes. We'll move on to item six.
That was, oh yeah, she said.
Yeah, that was five. Any disclosures on item six? Or did we, we did five and six.
Yeah, five and six.
On disclosures, okay.
We approve five, we have to approve six.
Now we need a, now we need a motion for item six. Or is there any discussion, any?
You have no cards, correct?
No cards on six, no.
So it's just a motion?
Okay, we're ready for a motion.
I make a motion to approve, approval of item 6A.
Second.
All in, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Now we'll move on to item seven, Beach Sound.
Item seven, W 2024-01566, Beach Sound. The request before the board is a Type II waiver allowing for the reduction in the front setback and a reduction in the side and front setbacks for the structure over 35 feet in height. We'll turn it over to the applicant and then staff.
Do we have any disclosures on item seven?
None.
None.
I spoke to George Gentile and Josh Long.
I spoke with Brian Seymour.
None.
I spoke with Jeff Atwater and Seth Ben.
And I spoke with Jeff Atwater.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did, I spoke with Jeff Atwater too, I'm sorry.
Okay, let's proceed with the presentation. Okay, let's proceed with the presentation.
Good morning, for the record, Josh Long with Colter. Before I start, I would like to enter, we've obtained 15 additional letters of support. I've got a package for each of the commissioners here, if I could hand those in.
We need to accept it.
Yes, you.
Make a motion to accept the supplements.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You may, you may bring them up.
I appreciate it, thank you. But there was a package for each of them to have 15, so, okay. Okay, well.
Get started.
Good morning, thank you. Thank you for your time this morning. Try and stop the raining there. There we go. And excuse my laptop here in front of me, the old eyes, I can't see that screen on my, my reading notes, so I'll be flipping between the two here. So this proposal is a collaboration of Perco Development and Colter, two local developers who have invested their efforts in Palm Beach County for decades. We have assembled a team that has worked, can I get rid of this ringing? I'm sorry. Is there?
Speak close to the mic.
Closer.
Yeah.
There we go. Okay, thank you for that tip. Yeah, that was annoying. All right. So we have assembled a team that has worked collaboratively and carefully to bring a beautiful and resilient project to the county. The team we have with us today includes George Gen Teal of 2GHO, Mark Campbell of Tin Design Architects and Bill Perry with Gunster. Our team is here for additional questions if you have them after our presentation. So quick, we'll go into a little bit of history. This is the first of its kind, this application is the first of its kind in the county. We all, of course, remember the tragedy of the Surfside condominium collapse. I'm not going to rehash that today. However, it is important because it brought to light the need for some regulatory changes to protect the lives of the people in older condominiums in Florida, particularly coastal condominiums, as we are going to talk about today. The downside of the changes, of course, as we all have seen in the news even as recently as a couple of weeks ago, is that there could be massive financial implications to condominium owners. Either they find money or they lose their homes, or they sell to developers who can create new opportunities. It is not always that easy, of course. This is because since these condominiums were built decades ago, there have been significant regulatory changes, county rules on setbacks, drainage, landscaping, changes in floodplain, coastal construction control lines and other changes. These changes have impacted the ability on some properties to even build back what was already there, much like, much less something that can be truly resilient utilizing today's current technologies. Recognizing this reality, the Palm Beach County Commission took a lead in encouraging redevelopment of some of the older condominiums if the owners of those condos wanted to do so. Almost a year to the date, our privately initiated text amendment was in front of this board on July 2nd and you recommended approval of the type two waiver process. That type two waiver application itself, the privately initiated application, took almost a year and a half to review. It was thoroughly vetted, reviewed with staff, countless meetings, variations of the text, and ultimately was adopted by the Board of County Commissioners on July 17, 2024. This was a recognition that older condominiums can be in a very difficult position along the coastline. It's that new type two waiver as before you today. So here we have the request. This is the type two waiver request that we're requesting today. The requests before you today are related to the reduction in front setback and for relief on the additional front and side setbacks that relate to the height of the building. These are two different sections of code which we will discuss. Specifically, this is the language of the approved waiver. As you can see, the two waivers we are requesting are separate items, that they do have generally the same standards. We will talk more about these specific standards, but first let's discuss the project and its compatibility with the beach road area. So first, just to give everybody a general sense of the location, our property is highlighted in red. As you can see, we're in the far north part of Palm Beach County. The Martin County line is just a couple hundred feet to the north of us. We are adjacent to the Atlantic Ocean. We currently have RM zoning and the property is currently developed with a 12-unit multifamily building. It was built in 1984. So here we have a picture of the site plan and the front beach road elevation. Now, as you can see with the site plan on the left, we have the building centered and we do have landscape buffers on the north, south and along beach road, providing much-needed landscaping in this particular part of the county. The image on the right is important to kind of slowly walk through. So this is an image if you're on beach road looking at our front facade. And what we've done with this project is we've implored current, modern condo technologies and design standards by internalizing our parking. One particular planning element up and down this section of the street is that these condos that were built 30, 40 years ago all utilized surface parking. You will see from other images I show that in front, right on beach road, you have surface parking lots, travel lanes on the side setbacks, front setbacks and everything else. So what we've done is we've taken the parking element away and we've enhanced the pedestrian realm. So we, we do have along the street run, grand lobby. This is a two-story lobby. The lobby is half a floor, so there are ground floor units behind the lobby. So there are seven floors of residential that face the ocean, but along beach sound, we do have six floors of residential. Obviously, this building is taller than the one that was there before and that was part of the resiliency waiver that we're going forward. We have changes in floodplain elevation and also the basic condominium technology and demands from consumers have changed dramatically in 40 years, whereas older condominiums could be built with a seven and a half to eight and a half finished floor height. Today's luxury condominiums require 10 to 11 to 11 and a half finished floor heights, which is what we have in this building. So as those things progress, we, the building height does get higher. So the, the top of the residential sixth floor is 92 feet, four inches. However, because of the architectural elements and the fact that we have amenities on the roof, the maximum height of this building to the top of the architectural features, which you see there, is 110 feet, two inches, which is what we're requesting the waivers for, is 110 feet, two inches. Now, this is a, a modern technology and, and design feature where we have hidden all of the mechanical equipment on the roof. So about two-thirds of the roof is the mechanical equipment, but it's been integrated as part of the design of the building, so you don't see condensers and elevator shafts and other things like that. It's, it's integrated to look like a seamless architectural feature. The other third, oh, and you can see from the site plan, the other third, the back, the ocean part, does have a small pool for, it's private pool for our residents with elevator and a, and a lobby landing area. Those are also enclosed and air-conditioned and therefore that's the reason why we're requesting 110 feet, two inches. However, the top of the residential floor, floor six, is 92 feet, four inches. So our next slide here, in context to our surroundings, what we have here are the other two buildings that are to the north and the south of us. So the building to the north, as you can see, has a ground floor lobby and they have eight floors of residential units facing beach sound. The building to the south of us has a ground floor lobby and seven units of residential. So we have a ground floor lobby. However, our lobby is larger and grander, which is in line with today's condominiums. Our residential floors are larger and grander, which is in line with today's condominiums. Our, our, our starting point is higher because of the floodplain. So all of these things added up is a reason why our building is taller, but when you look at the front and what we're providing as compatibility, we are residential lobby, six floors residential, next to residential lobby, eight floors residential lobby, seven floors. So there's the compatibility with our building in this area. So the next slide you see, just to give you an example, these are the other, these are essentially mid-rise condos. You know, they're seven, eight, 12, 13 stories along this entire area. But just, just giving you a context, this is what this part of the county is composed of. These are mid-rise condominium buildings and so we are compatible with what is already existing in that area. Here's a street view looking south from our property. As you can see, the, the mid-rise condominiums extend and that, that is the character of this area and that is why we're providing, once again, a, a mid-rise condominium building with 12 units are there today, 12 units will be there tomorrow. So we're having the same amount of density that's already been approved and existing in this area for nearly 40 years. So here's our contextual rendering. This is our building to scale, superimposed with all the other buildings in the area, showing that the.
The image is not showing.
You're right. That's, I know it's going to happen eventually. There we go. That's the contextual rendering, which shows that the, the buildings are in line with what's already built there. So this is our building superimposed and as you can also see from the required one foot to seven and a half setbacks, that our building tapers back. That was determined by the Board of County Commission as the requirement for this application to come in and seek the waiver. So we do have that architectural variation, whereas the rest of the buildings are, you know, essentially square and go straight up. Ours does taper back in. You can see the use of our landscape buffers along the area. And if you go back to this particular slide, I think it's important to notice the lack of landscaping and the presence of the on-street parking along this area. I mean, this was something that was designed and really not prohibited 30, 40 years ago. However, we've emerged as new planning techniques and today you'll find no planning requirements that encourage on-street parking or parking along the pedestrian realm. So these are things that have emerged and evolved over the decades. So as you can see, there's essentially hardly any landscaping in here. We'll be providing the code-required landscaping, I think 47 new trees along this particular area on our property. So once again, that's a contextual rendering, so we'll get into the actual standards. Go over this a little bit further for you. But prior to going through these standards, I just want to state for the record that we do agree with the zoning department's analysis of our application, which determine that our application does comply with all of the required standards. So let's go through each of these standards specifically. So first standard is, does not create additional conflicts with the ULDC and the proposed development meets the elements of the ULDC, but for the setbacks for which we are sought or are seeking today. The use is permitted in this district. The waiver software for this project does not create any additional conflicts with the ULDC as the development form, massing and use are in line with the permitted standards. As a sustainable medium-density residential development, the waiver will maintain the architectural harmony and visual integrity of the surrounding environment while optimizing the buildings, building space and condominium units. Second, waiver will not cause a detriment to the overall design and development standards. Here again, this is consistent with the design and development standards of the ULDC. The only deviation being requested is this type two waiver. Everything else is directly compliant with code and your staff has determined that as well. Alternative design does not impact adjacent properties. This waiver is only to allow what the BCC put in place to allow a permissible height to setback ratio at a certain level. The height itself comes only as the building setback increases. This still provides 71 feet between the proposed building and the existing building to the north and 57 feet between the proposed building and existing building to the south. The setback waiver will not adversely. No, it was all on that slide. So the setback waiver will not adversely impact the adjacent properties. So now we'll move on to the specific standards, Article 2B 7D6. The first six criteria are factual criteria. We comply with all these required factual criteria. We are redevelopment of existing multifamily structure, we're greater than three stories and 35 feet in height, we abut the Atlantic Ocean, we're existing RM zoning and no increase in existing density and not, we do not propose a building further eastward than existing building footprint. The other four standards are a little more technical and we'll get into those now. So first is the consistency with the comp plan. The proposal is not only consistent with, but really furthers many of the elements of the comprehensive plan, particularly as it is an older condominium building being replaced with a new resilient building. In addition to the consistency with the underlying high-density residential land use, the project's resilient design standards that can be accomplished feasibly with the proposed waiver will meet the coastal management element plan, including policy 1.1 CEHK, which also deal with enhancing the shoreline, protecting the estuarine waters, adjacent coastal ecosystem, enhancing the coastal vegetation, protection of the dune and other environmental safeguards. Our next is consistency with the code. As mentioned previously, the only waiver sought is for setbacks and as identified by the site plan submitted with this application, the proposed project is not in conflict with any portion of the code nor any other local, state or federal regulations. To the contrary, the redevelopment will replace an existing building that does not meet those regulations. Compatibility with surrounding use. Once again, we have the contextual image to show this. Once again, this standard does not require sameness as other buildings. They don't have to be the same. They just have to be compatible, not as to height nor design in general. Indeed, the entire concept of the adjacent setback is to provide some vary, some variation, some variety, which can exist based on the varied lots in the vicinity. It is also not just the immediate adjacent properties, even though looking at them alone, it is compatible. The immediate area surrounding the subject property is built with multi-mid-rise condominium towers, built at 12 units per acre with variable heights and setbacks. This is consistent along the beach road and even into the villages dequested to the south. Our proposed building is higher than the current building, but is consistent with the other mid-rise condominiums within our area. And change conditions. Many changes have occurred since the building was developed in 1984, the coastal construction control line, FEMA flood maps, Florida building code change, especially after the construction condominium requirements after Hurricane Andrew and changes, many changes to the ULDC. So in conclusion, as mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, this is the first waiver of its kind. The county adopted the waiver with consideration of this site in mind. The proposed waiver meets the requirements of the code. Therefore, we're asking today for a motion to recommend approval be set to the, sent to the Board of County Commissioners. That does conclude our presentation and I would like to reserve the remainder of my time to address any rebuttals. We're here for questions after, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Is it, can, do you have a picture of the current building that's there?
I do not have a picture of the, the current structure there.
Any other questions? We, we, staff, staff, you want to give your report?
Okay, good morning. Wendy Hernandez, I'm the deputy zoning director and presenting on behalf of the county the application that's before you for beach sound. So in, I'll probably be doing some repeating, but the site is located on the north side of 100, no, that's not my application. It's on beach road on the east side of beach road and it is the second property south of the Palm Beach County northern line with Martin County. The property is zoned RH and it is on 1.46 acres and they are requesting two waivers that were modified in the code back in July of 2024. This is a newly created waiver and this was to allow a reduction in the front setback from 25 feet to 20 feet and a reduction in the additional setbacks for front and side when a structure is over 35 feet. The current code requires, other than in this beach area, oh, and a one additional foot setback for every one additional foot of height over 35 feet. So for this particular project, 110-foot tall building over 35 feet, that's an additional 75 feet of setback for the structure as a whole. So you would end up with one long, narrow, skinny piece of prop, building on this particular property at 110 feet. With the modifications to the code that happened last year, the board adopted regulation the board adopted regulations that over 35 feet, they would have one additional foot setback for every seven and a half feet of height over the 35 feet, ultimately creating the wedding cake, sort of speak, look, where you taper it in. So the 35, anything at 35 feet would meet the 15-foot side setbacks and the 25-foot front setback. And in this case, they're requesting 20 feet. So it would meet the front setback for the first 35 feet, and then it would taper in, as he has presented in his elevations that are shown, that he had presented. So that is their requested waiver. Again, the area is surrounded with RH zoning. This particular waiver is only for those properties that have an RH or RM zoning and abut the beach. The unincorporated area has very limited pockets that abut the beach. Most of the areas are in the incorporated municipalities. Okay, so this is the preliminary site plan that they have presented to staff. The site is an existing four-story structure. Based on their elevations that were presented in their building permit, that is a 1982 building permit. They have a 40-foot-tall building measured at a zero grade. And then these particular ones, because they have to fill up to comply with the current standards, the average finished grade brings the height at 110 feet above that finished grade. Access is still going to remain from Beach Road. As part of the waiver, they have to ensure that they are not increasing density. So the number of units that is currently existing is 12 units, and they are proposing 12 units. They cannot increase density. So there was a lot of correspondence that was received where the residents believe that they are increasing density. They are not increasing density. There was also comments received from the public in which they lacked parking. They meet the parking requirements, and they have a few spaces more than the parking requirements for the 12 units that are proposed. This is really just part of their visual impact analysis that they had provided to staff, and he had shown, which superimposes their proposed structure along with the existing buildings that are along Beach Road. So when we did this slide, I had no contacts from the public. But as of last Friday, the Commissioner's Office had forwarded me 38 letters with a mix of support and, where's my contact log here? Support and opposition. And so we have, okay, so we, 34 at the time on Friday. So on Friday, we had 28 in opposition and six who supported the request. And as of yesterday evening, I got another three emails, which modified it to 30 in opposition and seven in support. So I have nothing else, other than we are recommending approval subject to conditions of approval. I also want to know that we did distribute this application not only to the zoning staff, but our building engineering, environmental resource management group, our, Megan Houston is Resiliency Group. So this application was distributed and comments were provided. The agent did address those issues prepared by the other agencies as it relates to this request.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. We now, we have seven cards, I believe?
We do, we have seven cards. So because we only have one, I guess, microphone that works, we'll just call one individual up at a time. Once you get up, please state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. So the first one I have is Seth Ben.
The other side?
This side over here.
I have a presentation to have pulled out. I have copies of that presentation as well, just to make it easy for everybody. If you don't mind, I'd like to just offer this.
Make a motion to accept the addendum.
You can't, you can't show a presentation without preapproval from staff. I have to look at it before you show it on Channel 20. You didn't send over a request to ask me to review it. Turn off the TV, please.
Can I distribute my paper copies?
Yes, you could do the paper copy, but it can't go onto the channel. And if you want me to flip through a paper copy, I can confirm it right now.
Yeah, absolutely. Nick, keep one of those for Lisa. Thank you.
So we had a motion to accept. Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And you pose.
And I apologize for that. I was not aware of that. My name is Seth Ben. I'm here on behalf of the Carlisle HOA. I do have this presentation. I would like to ask that perhaps I'd be given a few additional minutes to go through this. This is a quasi-judicial hearing, and I think there's some important information in this presentation I'd like to share with you. I'll try to go through it relatively quickly, you know, out of this, but I may ask for some additional time at the end.
I think Lisa has to-
Did I just get the thumbs up? All right, we're back up. Thank you so much, Lisa. Okay, so we were here before, when that, when this code came in. We talked about it. We said that the sky was the limit. We were a little nervous about any real clear standards. And here we are today, our fears resolved. And here's the code today, and now they want you to ignore the code because they haven't talked about the actual standards that were put in place and that we were given assurances that, yeah, when something comes in, there's these new waivers they can ask for. But these new waivers aren't the standard that they get. They're the least they can ask for. And then you get to make the determination of, one, if the alternative design option is going to adversely impact the properties adjacent, and if that proposed development is compatible and generally consistent with the uses and the character of the land surrounding and in the vicinity of the land proposed development. Not just, is it compatible? Not just, oh, there's other tall buildings in the area, so we're fine. Because that's not looking at all at the context or the building itself. Here's that property on the site. Their building, they came in with the code request. Why? Because their site is wildly smaller than all the other buildings, all the other properties in the area. On the beach side, they've got approximately, a little over one acre on the beach side alone, whereas all these other seven buildings that they've shown you in these tightly cropped images are on two acres. They're on three acres, they're on four acres. Their buildable area is .56 acres. What they have on their lot between the dune and the right-of-way line is less than six tenths of an acre. A decent-sized, single-family home property in Palm Beach County that they want to put 100,000 square feet of building on, that they want to put close to 30,000 square feet underground. Those aren't resiliency requirements. Those are desire to put as much building and generate as much value as possible on the smallest piece of property that they can. Here's what their rendering actually looks like. When they show you those views, that long view of their visual, go, oh, look, the spacing looks fine. The spacing looks fine because the other buildings in this area have sufficient setbacks from their property lines. This is what you see. Those walls on either side of that building, those are the walls on the adjacent property. That's how their building references the site they're on. The reason that there's adequate spacing here is because what they're asking for is nothing, and the area, the buildings around it in this area provide adequate setbacks for their height, something that they're not even attempting to do. We pulled their site plan into the aerial so that we could develop what that building footprint looks like. This is what that building footprint looks like on their lot. This is what a 15-foot setback on the north and south looks like.
Seth, stop just for one second. He would ask for more time, but no one had allowed him. Are we going to give him more time? What is the-
I'm okay with a couple more minutes.
It's only going to take a couple more. I'll get through these quickly. This is what their building footprint looks like in context of their site. This is the setback that they're asking for a waiver from. This is what they would be required to do for 110-foot building. 90 feet to the north and south, 100 feet out to the right-of-way. So they're not asking for some small waiver. They're asking for a ridiculous reduction in what would have been required under the code today. When my client, the Claridge, first came to me years ago and said, hey, somebody's looking to buy the building next to you, should we be worried? I said, no, you shouldn't be worried. They've got no space there. They can build a building, they can redevelop it, they can get to five or six stories. They could do a project there, sure. But it's never going to be something that's going to tower over you. It won't be an issue. And this is why, because this is what they would be required to do today. 15-foot setbacks. So they haven't done analysis of what the community area looks like. So we have. What, we've heard some statements of, like, these other buildings in the area, they wouldn't meet the code standard today. Maybe that's true. But what is the, what is in the vicinity? That's the code requirement. What's in the vicinity? The average setback of those other six buildings, six feet per story. They're proposing 1.8 feet per story on the floor. They're not coming anywhere close to what the set, side setbacks in this community, in this vicinity, look like. They're not making any effort to provide it. Here's their own shadow study. Here in December 21st, when everybody's here in the building wanting to enjoy the pool deck, that purple star is the Claridge's pool deck. It'll be in shadow all day, starting at noon throughout the afternoon. And then the front setback. This purple line just draws, shows you what the average setbacks look like from the road, the public realm, the right-of-way. All these towers that they've shown in their tightly cropped photos, those setbacks average 60 to 90 feet along this right-of-way. You see where their yellow footprint is. A third of their building projecting beyond what the current view corridor looks like. With that, they're talking about improving the pedestrian realm by crashing their building through that setback line. It's a consistent area that that's the open space. This jewel of Jupiter Island, this jewel of Palm Beach County, this open space that we expect, this is the precedent they're setting for that? It's even more galling because this developer developed the sea glass to the south. Similar north and south setbacks may be justifiable by the fact that it was flanked by a park. But that building has an 80-foot setback to its tower portion, without any context of adjacent buildings. Not sure why they had to go to 20 feet here. This is that building. It's entirely inappropriate for the area. It has nothing to look at it. The mere fact that it's, there's other similar buildings in the height is not the end of that analysis. We would ask that you find that this alternative design will adversely impact the adjacent properties, and that the proposed development is not compatible and generally consistent with the uses and character of the land surrounding and in the vicinity of the land proposed development. This is the standard before you. We would ask that you not ignore it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, next up would be Jonathan, is it Claire?
I believe you said Jonathan Chan. I just want to make sure that I heard it correctly.
You know what? I couldn't tell if that was an H or a N to you then.
I apologize for the handwriting.
No worries.
Good morning. My name is Jonathan Chan, and I represent Ed and Karen Ratto, who are owners in the Beach Town condominium that you're here discussing today. And they asked me to be here on their behalf and read to you their position on this, in which they oppose this redevelopment and this zoning request. We are property owners at Beach Sound, and we have not consented to this change of our home. We also did not consent to having any zoning or variance changes submitted relating to our home. And we object to any plans that entail demolishing the existing building. We believe we are here because it was misrepresented that the need was due to a financial hardship regarding Beach Sound and the association being compliant with the new condominium regulations. These representations, as well as any implication that this building needs to be demolished due to safety issues, are simply false. And frankly, it's a bit troubling that the developers are using the Surfside tragedy as a pretext to tearing down this building when it simply does not apply. Specifically, UES Milestone Inspections LLC just completed the milestone inspection on March 11th of this year. The summaries of the finding was, quote, "Based on the Phase 1 inspection, no indications of substantial structural conditions were seen that would negatively affect the building's general structural condition and integrity. Unsafe or dangerous conditions were not observed. A Phase 2 milestone inspection is not recommended." Furthermore, Beach Sound is financially stable with adequate reserves, no plans for special assessments, and is projecting a nominal 3% annual increase in 2026 to comply with the SRS report and meet any future maintenance needs. The Rattos respectfully request that this variance not be approved, and certainly not under these false pretenses and in violation of their rights as current property owners at Beach Sound. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jonathan, it looks like Baug, B-A-U-G, Baug?
Good morning. Good morning. My name is John Baug. I am the manager and a nine-year resident at Claridge. Here speaking for our 16 homeowners, many absent this July holiday. I'm here to address the Beach Sound redevelopment waiver. A 100,000-plus-square-foot tower on a .56-acre lot which demands careful review. This project's scale is misaligned. Excuse me. Overwhelming scale, 100,000-plus-square-foot tower with 5,000 and 10,000-square-foot units and a two-story underground parking garage on a tiny lot risks structural and mechanical issues. Inadequate setbacks. The proposed setbacks, 15 feet to the north, 20 feet to the south, 20 feet from the road, violate ULDC requirements. All nearby towers existing currently have and maintain 60- to 90-foot setbacks. There is no on-street parking on any of these buildings. Incompatibility. The ULDC Board of County Commissioners mandates compatibility. This project is an example of incompatible. Noise pollution, 24/7 exhaust fan and a generator 15-foot from the Claridge Spa and Pool will exceed 60 decibels, violate county ordinances, and emit fumes. Flooding risk. Towers' density and underground garage threaten stormwater systems, risking flooding to Claridge and Ocean Sound. Construction disruption. 24 months of construction could cause property damage, flooding, logistical chaos, harming our pool, spa, and structures. Finally, the massive tower with minimal setbacks and a two-story underground garage defies responsible planning and endangers neighboring properties. I urge you to deny the waiver and demand a scaled-down compliant design. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Bob England.
Hey, my name's Bob England. I'm here because I just, we don't oppose some building-
Bob, can we have your name and address?
Bob England, 19950 Beach Road, Unit 7M. I oppose this construction because they are not doing the setbacks as everybody else had to use according to your rules. Everybody did your rules. And now we have an engineering firm that wants you to forget the setbacks, forget the zoning agreements. I think it's ridiculous. All I want you to do is do what you said when you gave all of our buildings a requirement. Give them the same requirements. And that's all I needed to say.
Thank you. Ed O'Sullivan?
Good morning. My name is Ed O'Sullivan, and I have lived at the Claridge for 15 years. 19950 Beach Road. I am in 8 South. I am here as the Secretary Treasurer. I have undergraduate and graduate education in business and have been in the commercial, construction, and development industry for 61 years. Like Seth, I would like to ask for a tiny bit more time. Our Ocean Sound president wasn't able to attend today. She planned on it, but she was, she's now a grandmother as of yesterday. So she can't make it down from Orlando, and I don't blame her. Our next one in the 500-foot, Landfall, was getting ready the other day. He pulled his back out, and he got an epidural last night, and he can't make it either. So they wanted me to speak a tiny bit for them as well. I can do it pretty shortly. They do not want this, they do not want this massive, massive beast of a building. It overwhelms everything around our little community. It's been, as we said, and as the advocate said, it's been almost a year since we last met. The theme then was hardship, and the narrative was a crumbling old building forces unit owners to sell and save their life savings. Kindly developer comes to the rescue. Where are we today? Unit owners enriched hundreds of thousands of dollars from past developers' failure to close and the new developers' large, non-refutable extension payments. They don't own this thing yet, they just got it tied up. The old crumbling billy was determined by the milestone- The old crumbling billy was determined by the milestone engineer to be structurally sound, no Phase 2 required. How's that for resiliency? Since 1984, still sitting silent and proud. And Tassahalee wiped out the permitting concerns after a hurricane. Senate Bill 180, put that to rest for a while. Everybody gets a chance not to have to run and meet all new current requirements if they can prove that they're still safe. No reason at all to justify Phase 2 waiver over the entire PVC Jupiter Island community. All seven buildings don't need this waiver. It doesn't need to be done. As with the overlay attempting before, this waiver was just another clever attempt to game the system to their advantage and in-run codes in place that have protected us for decades. It is very bad idea forcing innocent homeowners to spend tens of thousands of dollars, as we have over the last four years, to protect our property. Like the overlay before, this waiver should be sent to the trash can. In reality, what changes does this beast of a building take away or bring to its next-door neighbors and the community? Takeaways. Takes away our soft ocean breezes and turns them into whirlwinds. Takes away our sunshine and pushes us into professional shadows or suffering through the glare of 3,000 square foot, of square feet of solar panel windows. Takes away our sense of openness and places us into a high-rise title. Takes away our tranquility and forces us to endure Miami rooftop party culture. Takes away a sizable chunk of our property values, and that's already been proven. Takes away our common view setback lines from the highway all the way to the, all the way with the other condos. What does it bring? Brings long-term fear of flooding or structural damage from the risky underground, partially below sea level garages so close to our property lines. Brings fumes and noise from large fans and pumps for underground garages and rooftop amenities. Brings architecture in direct conflict with its PVC neighbors. Brings no compatibility with the surroundings or neighboring buildings. In summary, it is clear this waiver is an attempt to become a textbook case of unjust enrichment in covering a neighbor's property to benefit you. This blanket waiver has opened Pandora's box and has set up a scenario for developers to destroy and replace many of the buildings on the island. The greed will drive them to do it. You can stop this by closing that box, and it will help the community save Little Beach Sound. Given its strong structural integrity, at a minimal cost, it can become one of the most affordable boutique gems on the island for the benefit of all involved. It is clear that the vast majority do not want this beast of a building on our beach. And I have a bunch more letters to bring. They just came in at the last minute, but I want to thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next card is Donald Smith.
I'm Donald V. Smith. I reside in the Claridge in Unit 7S, which would directly face this new building. I'm here simply to give you an idea of what an owner of a unit of an adjacent property would think about with respect to this new building. The first is our diminished privacy. Second would be diminished value. Third would be loss of sunlight. Fourth would be much greater noise. Fifth is increased wind. And the last would be the loss of value of my particular unit. If this building is built or even approved to be built, I will likely sell my unit because of these problems and probably sell it at a large discount. I note the standard, there's two standards, but one standard indicates that an amendment or a waiver like this should not adversely impact adjacent properties. This waiver clearly violates that standard with respect to our property. Thank you.
I have one more card. The gentleman Jay Kaiser just wishes his comments to be put in for record. He does not wish to speak. That concludes the comments I have.
All right.
A rebuttal from the applicant.
Oh, okay.
We have those talk.
Are you?
I'm Jay Kaiser.
Oh, I thought you didn't want to speak, but you're more than welcome to.
You want me to?
You may, yes. Your name and address, you can speak.
Yeah, you just checked you didn't want to, so I didn't want to call you up, but you're more than welcome.
I didn't know they were going to let me. My name's Jay Kaiser. I live in 19950 the Claridge. I came in here unprepared, but I listened to the other side's argument. I asked you folks, I've built 1,700 condos in Palm Beach and Broward County. What would happen to the rest of the street if everyone else bumped their boat, their front of the building out to that level that these guys are proposing? And I'll give you the answer. Gulf Ocean Mile in Fort Lauderdale and Pompano, the new high rises. If you allow this, then everyone else can bump their building out. And who is this benefiting? It's not the owner, it's not us, the abutting property owners. It's not even the guys who live there who are going to make some money on this. It's developers selling 12 units. This is silly stuff to get involved in. You shouldn't set this precedent. Once you set the precedent, it's there for everyone to take advantage of. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, any rebuttal from the applicant?
Good morning for the record, Josh Lawn. I would like to bring Bill Perry with Gunster up to address one of the comments from one of the lawyers.
Good morning. How's everybody doing? I'm substituting for Brian Seamer today, Bill Perry with the Gunster Law Firm. Just a couple of things raised by my legal brethren, I just wanted to make sure you have the, our position on those two things. So Mr. Bain was talking a lot about compatibility. In the pictures that Josh put up, you could use your eye test. I mean, it's a 12-unit mid-rise condo amongst 12-unit, or mid-rise condos, and it seems to fit. But he also gave a mathematical analysis on the setback, which we kind of fundamentally disagree with. A year and a day ago, the waiver process was in front of this board, and it was approved by a 5-2 vote, and then a couple of weeks later, the county commission approved it by a 7-0 vote. So the code, as it exists today, includes the waiver process. So I think the relevant, what Mr. Bain was talking about was really, we ought to go back to the old code. Well, we can't. The code now has this waiver process in it, and that is what allows for this building. And in fact, the waiver process was adopted with this building in mind, but also buildings like it in mind that may get developed in the future, and trying to have an intelligent way to approach that with the new constraints on development that exist in 2025, not in 1985. I think if you look to the county staff report and to the justification statement, you'll see that this building does meet the criteria in the code as it exists today with the waiver process, and therefore should qualify for the waiver, but we will leave that to you. Second, Mr. Chan, talking about his client opposing, and he has, and he's filed a lawsuit that is ongoing, and he's fully entitled to do that. However, in condo law, the condo association speaks on behalf of the residents when it comes to the common property. And land, which is what this building sits on, is common property. And the condo association has voted and provided with Mr. Stone with a letter saying that they've authorized this application. Mr. Chan's client disagrees with that, was fine, but he was outvoted by his neighbors, 91% in favor, him against. And under condo law 718111 says, "One condo unit owner doesn't have the right to speak on behalf of the association. The association speaks on behalf of the residents." So those are the two points I wanted to make, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you much.
Any questions?
I have a question for Sir Long. Could you address the concerns that were raised by people in opposition with regards to impact on adjacent properties, particularly the concerns they raised about a shadow study and the placement of an exhaust fan that they asserted would impact the noise levels on their properties?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So as I mentioned in my presentation, our privately initiated text amendment took about a year and a half to proceed through the process, and ultimately was adopted. During that process, the size of our property was the same then as it is today. The need to expand and get setback relief was identified and discussed, and the regulations that you have in front of you knew all those factors then. The same people opposed the text amendment last year, but this board approved it to go forward and the commission adopted it. So we're moving forward with those particular standards. As it relates to anything that's related to the Florida Building Code or the actual structure itself, there are existing regulations pertaining to decibel noise and proximity of other type of mechanical equipment that are reviewed at the building permit process. So if there are particular issues with a design aspect of our building, there's a process for that to be reviewed. And so we're here just for the zoning matter. Any of those other type of issues, we would have to comply with all the requirements for noise, pollution, vibration, form of construction. All of those type of items would have to be reviewed during the building permit process.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, you didn't answer the question that was asked with regards to the shade study. And part of the waiver is that a waiver is granted without impact to the neighbors.
Correct. And so we did provide a shade study. It was reviewed by staff as part of their evaluation and determination that we comply. The shade study did investigate the other times of the year as well. So if you had the full shade study, you could see that for many months of the year, there's absolutely no impact at all. If you look at this particular area during the worst-case scenario, which would be the winter solace, December 21st, there are other existing condos that shade adjacent pools in this area as well. In fact, it's a common occurrence for condominiums and pools in South Florida during late December. So however, we do provide some shade during that time, but it, there are other times of the year where that shade does not have any impact upon that.
But you don't mind providing the shade during the best time of year?
Well, these are oceanfront condos, and they have access to the beach as well, which is a unique feature of this.
I have one additional question, if that's okay.
Yes, go ahead.
You, in your compatibility analysis and statements from you and your team, you keep repeating 12 units, we're not changing 12 units, density is not changing, but I've not seen any kind of rationale about the change in the square footage, because it looks to me like you're increasing maybe the units by five times, and the whole building is a massive change from the building that it is. So when looking at the character of the neighborhood and the compatibility issues, why did you not address the massive change in this mass of the building, the scope and the scale of the building? Instead, you've just addressed, oh, it's just 12, it's just 12, we're just 12 units, mid-rise, mid-rise, but you've not ever addressed the scale of the building change.
So the ULDC does regulate building area, and there's, you can build 40% of your area.
I don't think you're going to answer my question.
I'm not, but I'm just letting you know pertaining to what the code regulates. So what you've cited is not a code regulation.
But it is, because the waiver requires compatibility with surrounding uses. And so the compatibility with the surrounding uses can include, because there's no objective factors, but the compatibility with the surrounding uses can include the scale of the building compared to the rest of the neighborhood.
Yes, so we have provided larger units for this area to increase the property values, and so the units are larger, there's no denying that, but the number of units is still the same.
So what does the increase in the scale of the building have to do with your need for a resiliency waiver?
Well, the fact that the building has to be higher and that the floors are, so that's part of what we couldn't rebuild without going higher in this particular location.
Right. But as a decision maker, or at least an advisor, are, we look at, why should we address this waiver for this building? And we've had presentation here today that the building isn't falling down. It's passed its first inspection. So why should we provide this waiver for all of these decrease in setbacks? Because the building's not falling down. So what I'm trying to get at is, you're asking for a waiver which massively increases the scale and scope of the building out of compatibility with the rest of the neighborhood. Why should we provide that waiver if the waiver's not needed per state law because it's not falling down?
So if you recall, the justification that we filed with our amendment to the text was that property owners are faced with financial improvements. So it wasn't that the building had to fall down, it's that they're faced with unexpected financial requirements to make improvements. And this was just one of many variables that allowed them the opportunity to rebuild a building. If they were uncomfortable in a building that was built to 1982 code standards with the, you know, the proliferation and the intensity of the storms we're experiencing, if those property owners were uncomfortable living in a building built in 1982 and wanted something that could be built to today's hurricane standards, they'd be given the opportunity to move forward and build it. That was part of the application as well.
So it's not because the building is inherently needing upgrades because of the state code, but I thought that when we did that waiver, it was because we were building in provisions for unit owners to create buildings because of the resiliency issue. But it seems to me that this is a scale issue that's not, that's not part of that waiver process.
Okay, any, go ahead.
I just wanted to chime in. I think you're talking about the last standard under the waiver.
It's, yeah, well, the last two.
Okay. Is there a way for staff to pull that up, just so we can see it? I don't think the word resiliency is actually.
Unless we open the code, we didn't include that waiver itself, but it's in the staff report, we could read it.
Yeah, just to read what it actually says.
In the staff, it's on page four.
Just for context, for anybody that's listening to know what you're talking about.
The last standard?
The last two standards are compatibility and then changed conditions.
Okay, so C, and it's on page nine of my staff report, "The proposed development is compatible and generally consistent with the uses and character of the land surrounding and in the vicinity of the land proposed for development." And D is, "There are changed site conditions or circumstances as demonstrated by the applicant's justification statement that necessitate a redevelopment of the existing structure in order to address government regulations that have changed since the initial construction."
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have one more card that came up with someone wanting to speak.
And I would think we need her to get sworn in, but we.
The public comment period has ended, so is that the discretion of the chair, if you'd like to?
I think one more comment is okay.
Okay, and then you would need to let the applicant rebut anything.
For sure.
Okay. So Michelle Silverstein, Sylvester, I'm sorry.
She came in after swearing.
Have you not been sworn in?
I was sitting in the back there.
I think she needs to be sworn in.
Yeah.
Were you here at the beginning of the meeting when we did the big swearing in?
I did.
Okay.
But I could swear in again. I'm Michelle Sylvester. I live in Beach Sound, and my unit looks over at the Claridge, which is the building that these gentlemen are living in. And so I face their building, which is a beautiful building. I overlook the pool. I overlook the pool. There's always shade on that pool, which is something that is not going to change when there's a new building that comes up. And I am here on behalf of a lot of the, everybody else in the building except for the Rottos, and basically what they wanted to let you know is, in 1984, when that building was built, they, when the claretch was built, they did not ask for approval from Beach Sound to put in their eight or nine-story building, which totally overwhelms Beach Sound. The new building that's going up is going to fit in nicely, it's going to look beautiful, it's going to be built with resilient surfaces. The developer is using sustainable and resilient construction that are beneficial to the coastline and the ecosystem, and it's going to feature rainwater harvesting system for irrigation, reducing water consumption, and alleviating strain on local water. I don't think there's anything wrong with the parking garage being downstairs. Have you all seen the 220 Nautilus building that was, that's being built in Lake Park? That was approved, as well as other buildings on Beach Sound that are being built on the south side of Jupiter Island. Those were all approved, so I don't understand why there's a question with the approval for the new building at the Beach Sound property, honestly. And like I said last year, we're stepping on our hands if we don't allow for improvements in our construction in our area. So I encourage the approval of this waiver. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, any other questions?
Does the applicant have any rebuttal on that testimony?
No, he's indicating no.
Right, we're ready for a motion?
Before we do a motion, I just want to state, I did not realize Mr. Perry or Mr. Seymour were associated with this project. I know both of them, I was previously an attorney at Gunster Yocely 15 years ago. However, neither of them have contacted me to discuss this beforehand, and today is the first time I realized that they were involved with that. However, that doesn't impact my ability to fairly consider the evidence presented regardless of their involvement or not.
Okay, any other comments before a motion? We can have discussion after the motion.
I'll motion to recommend approval of item 7A.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed in the motion?
Opposed.
Okay, one opposed. And discussion at this point?
You just moved the vote.
We did have it, we did have it. All right, we'll move on to item eight.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, PDD CA 2023-00843 West End Crossing. The request before the board includes an official zoning map amendment, as well as a Class A conditional use for retail gas and fuels with a convenience store. And so we will turn it over to the applicant for presentation, and then followed by staff. Do you want to do disclosures right now?
Yeah, let's do disclosures.
Should be disclosures.
None, sorry, none. I spoke to Jeanne Ducharme and Don Herring.
I too spoke to Jeanne and Don.
I have none.
None.
I spoke with Don Herring's team.
Good morning, staff. Zoning Commission, sorry, I apologize. My name is Jeannie Ducharme with Cutler and Herring, and today I'm presenting West End Crossing MUPD. So for our project team, we have West End Crossing LLC, which is associated with the Brock Development Group. They're very well-known in Palm Beach County, they're a family-owned and operated development group that has been in the county for over 30 years. Everything they do is, with excellence. Our traffic engineer of record is Camille Horn, and our legal counsel is Brian Seymour at Gunster. Unfortunately, he couldn't be here today, he did have throat surgery, so we're wishing him well, so you guys have me this morning. So our request today is for a rezoning from agricultural residential to multi-use plan development, and a Class A conditional use for retail gas station and convenience store. This is running concurrent with the future land use amendment that will be going to the board at the end of the month. It was transmitted by the board back in February of this year, but the rezoning in Class A is in front of you this morning. So our site is just under six acres. We are doing that rezoning from AR to MUPD. Our gas station is with a convenience store of six pumps and 4,800 square feet up for the convenience store. We have two uses permitted by rights, which is medical office and retail, both buildings are just over 5,000 square feet. So our site is located on the southeast corner of Northlake Boulevard and Seminole Pratt-Witney Road. Currently, Northlake Boulevard and Seminole Pratt-Witney Road is under construction to go from a two-lane road to a six-lane road. And at our main intersection, it would be upgraded to about eight lanes. So we are a subject, our subject site is within two study areas. We are in the acreage neighborhood plan, which was initially established in 1995 and was later amended in 2008. Also, the Western Northlake Corridor Study is also within our subject site, which was established in 1998, and then later amended in 2010. And I just want to express that this is a quarter of a century old, both of these studies, and have not been updated since then. What was not considered in these studies was avenue development of 4,500 homes, the Geo Home site, which is just west of our subject, that have 2,500 homes, the Westlake Development, which is another additional 4,500 homes, Arden, which is another 2,300 homes, and then Artisery Lakes with 534 homes. That's 15,000 of homes that have already, recently been approved, that were not considered in these original studies. Since then, the acreage has changed. So this was the acreage in 1995. The population at this time was about 20,000 people. And you see, there's, it's rural nature and agriculturally driven. And when the acreage neighborhood plan was established, it was to protect this area against industrial and commercial uses for a small, with a small scale of residential population. And then this is the acreage community in 2010. As you can see, at this point, we started seeing growth in the population out in the acreage, and the population grew from 20,000 people to 35,000 people, and this is when those plans were updated. And then this is the acreage today, and you see our subject site still there. We are at the acreage in 2025 is an estimate of 60,000 people. You can see avenues currently under development, and the landscape of the area has dramatically changed, but the one thing that hasn't changed is the commercial development. And that was a big thing when we considered this property for commercial, the needed services for the community. And what also has changed has been definitely schools and civic uses have been built today to support this need, but commercial is still dramatically behind. And I want to show this comparison of 1995 and 2025. This is a 30-year difference in the growth in the population. It is significantly different, and we tripled in population since 1995, but yet the study, nor has Northlake study, corridor study have been updated since then to support the infrastructure needs to support the community. This is our proposed site plan. So we see Northlake Boulevard is currently under construction with a hot right from Seminole Pratt-Witney Road. Again, Seminole Pratt will be six lanes as well, and then just east of our site is a PB, Palm Beach County retention lake that is currently under construction, and is, the road and the retention pond are scheduled to be completed in early of 2026. These are regional investment, infrastructure, multimillion-dollar plans that are coming into place to support this population. But again, none of the commercial, this commercial development has not counted up to this. And I want to show you this future land use amendment, so you guys can see the scale. We have, right there, 3.3 miles away, we have commercial that has been approved, not built, for, and is, to serve the avenue development. That is going east of our site. And then west of our, I'm sorry, south of our site is Orange and Seminole Pratt, which is 2.3 miles away, which is a small-scale commercial development. We have one land use across 16 square miles with no commercial infrastructure. And I want to show you, we've came a long way since when we started this project. This was our original project, when we started, we had a car wash attached to the gas station, we had a fast food restaurant, but we met with the ALA on multiple occasions. We met with them in December, in April of this year as well, and we will be meeting with them right before the Board of County Commissioners meeting this month. And we have made significant changes. And I will jump over to our current site plan and point out the significant changes we made. So since then, what we have done, we've added eight-foot wall at the southern, at the south buffer over there. We've also added another eight-foot wall against the retention pond to help mitigate any impact to any other adjacent residents. We have also increased the landscape buffer than full motor was required. We also, keep in mind, are meeting the 50-foot rural parkway easement, that's an intergovernmental, intergovernment agreement with Palm Beach Gardens and Palm Beach County. We have added all the service stores, doors north of the site, so it doesn't have impact to any of the properties on the south. We've also relocated all of our dumpsters to the north property line as well, to minimize any impact it could potentially provide. And then these are our buffer cross-sections. So behind our site, it is a vacant lot where the gas station is, and we are providing a 90-foot setback from the property line to the porch, and the porch is another eight feet. There's also a 48-foot landscape buffer that we are providing on a berm with that eight-foot wall. And then this is where the medical and retail building is, and this would be, say, if they're from their home, as you can see, we have a 96 setback and a 61 landscape buffer that we are providing. And then you can see the orientation of the landscape buffer from the other side of the wall is providing, it's eliminating the impact to the property to the south. We have had some concerns about fuel prevention with the acreage neighborhood, and we have, the operator is Corporate 7-Eleven, we want to point that out. It's not going to be a franchise-owned gas station. We have confirmed that this will be doubled, the tanks will be doubled-walled with 24/7 monitoring. So if there's any leak that goes from the first wall to the second wall, there's an automatic shutdown and Corporate 7-Eleven is notified. We have daily, weekly, monthly, annual inspections on that, and then there will be onsite job training throughout, for all the employees throughout the site. And I think this is telling of our population to see. So I want to show you our adjacent community, which is Aurora Palm Beach, going into that Wellington area. We determined over here, there's 24 gas stations serving 93,000 people within a three-mile radius. So that means there's a gas station for every 3,800 people out in Aurora Palm, which is adjacent to us. By our site, we have a, we have one gas station, and within a three-mile radius, serving 26,000 people. There's a significant need and gap of service area to this area. And as we know about, I'm sure you guys have heard, Northlake and Beeline is currently going to be shut down for eight days. That is a big deal. These people have no immediate services to support their population. They have to drive out of the acreage, which Northlake is a key corridor to get out of the acreage, and they're unable to meet their population. If there's a hurricane and it's flooded, they can't get out of the acreage. They have, and there's 60,000 people in the acreage, this is a three-mile radius. I think it's very telling. And then our architecture, we chose 7-Eleven Corporate for a reason. We were approached by Wawa and Race Track, but they could not meet the rural architectural needs of the community. And that was a big deal to us, because we wanted to be a good neighbor. So we have the porches, we have the metal roofs, the long parapet walls, and that was something that, why we chose them. And another item, and here's our medical and retail office. We are going the same aesthetics, porch, metal roofs, and the parapet walls. We are consistent with the plan, so we, the commercial low land use is compatible with the surrounding area. We're located at a major intersection, which serves nearby growing communities, Avenue and Northlake, and the acreage itself. We are consistent with Articles 2 and 8, 2 through 8, there's no waivers or variances needed for this. We're compatible with the surrounding uses, we've provided an eight-foot wall on a berm, and enhanced the landscape buffers. Our design, our design minimizes adverse impacts. We have met with South Florida and ITID, and met all county environmental standards. We, this is logical development to serve a service gap in the area, and we are providing adequate public facilities. And then there's a change in conditions, the population has tripled in 30 years, and it's only going to. A lot of the homes I was showing you, Avenue's not fully built yet, Geo Homes is not built yet, all of Westlake's not built yet, that population's going to continue to grow. So conclusion, the polls aligns the county codes and standards, the design is compatible and environment, and provides vital protection, serves a clear public need for the area, and responsive, we responded to community and commission inputs, we've changed the site plan significantly over the last three years that we have been in this project process. And this is, you know, sustainable growth. We're not looking for a large-scale development of 20, 30 acres, this is small-scale to meet the acreage needs. We request your motion to recommend approval of the zoning and site plan and the conditional use, and thank you so much. We're here to answer any questions you may have.
Nancy Frontani will provide a presentation from staff.
Good morning, Commissioners. Nancy Frontani for the zoning division, here to present on West End Crossing MUPD. So the site is located southeast corner of Seminole Pratt-Witney Road and Northlake Boulevard. The current future land use is rural residential, one unit per 2.5 acres. However, this is running concurrently with an amendment to the future land use to commercial low. The zoning district is agricultural residential, and the acreage is 5.93. Their request before the board today is an official zoning map amendment to rezone from agricultural residential to the multiple-use plan development zoning district, and a Class A conditional use to allow a retail gas and fuel sales with convenience store. There are also other requests, other uses proposed, but these are permitted by right uses, as depicted on the site plan, retail sales, and medical office. The preliminary site plan indicates two buildings, Building A for the convenience store, 12 proposed fueling pumps, Building B for the retail sales and medical office, 85 parking spaces, access will be from Northlake, from both Northlake Boulevard and Seminole Pratt-Witney. Again, this application is contingent upon the approval of the future land use amendment. And the drainage is proposed to be to the north until the completion of the pond, county pond to the east of the site. This site indicates or shows where the county pond is to the east of the site. At the time of the publication, staff had received over 350 emails regarding this application, and staff recommends approval of the request, subject to the conditions of approval as indicated in C1 and C2, and happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I have a question. So just a sort of procedural one. So why are we hearing this today? Because the, as I understand it, if the, what's it, the future land use amendment is not approved by the Board of County Commissioners, then this cannot be approved, is that?
Yeah, this is a concurrent application running. Yeah, this is a concurrent application, running a companion application with the future land use application. So at the end of the month, both the requests for the future land use will be on the, on the, on the agenda along with this application. And if the board does have an unfavorable decision, are, this application wouldn't be heard?
The Board of County Commissioners, if they deny the future land use amendment, not, not this board, the zoning commission, but if the Board of County Commissioners denies the future land use amendment, then this application isn't heard by them.
Okay. Okay. We have a motion?
A motion to recommend approval of item 8A.
Second.
All in favor?
Were there no cards?
No cards.
There were no cards, no public cards.
No cards.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
And I recommend approval of item 8B.
Second.
Motion. Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's the end of the regular agenda. Anybody have any comments?
I don't see anything. Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, do we have a second?
Nothing from the staff.
Favor, aye. Thank you.